All right, let's call this meeting of the regular city council meeting of International Falls to order for Monday, April 15th. If you could all join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice, nice, good call.
Thank you, everybody. All members of the council are present. We do have two additions that have came onto our agenda for today. I would like to add the cooperative agreement between Koochin County and the City of International Falls for design and construction of the storm sewer relocation for the jail project, and approve Koochin County initiative, the use of Cary Park Arena on the morning of June 8th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Wegner.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. He'll get faster through the night. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries. Next, we go to the resolution for payments and claims. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was getting ahead because I was moving my agendas. We'll take a motion for the approval of the minutes for Monday, April 1st. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Go to the payments and claims. We have International Falls city transfers going to the 401 Permanent Improvement Fund of $66,666, I'm sorry, yeah, $66,666.66. That's coming evenly from the 601 water and the 603 sewer in the amount of $33,333.33. We have funds going to the Reserve for Capital Outlay, $20,567.25. That's coming from the 601 water in the amount of $14,693, and the 603 sewer in the amount of $5,874.25, for a total transfers of $87,233.91. International Falls regular claims of $449,748.19, and International Falls Library Board claims of $2,949.91, for totals account payable of $452,698.98. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the transfers and payments and claims.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller and an immediate second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Go to audience, is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something forward that's not on our agenda? Hearing none, we'll have an opportunity later in the meeting. We'll go down to the consent agenda. We have necessary expenses for the mayor, councilors, and/or supervisor, or department supervisors to go to the 2024 Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Summer Conference in Wade Park. That is July 24th through the 26th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Just some public information, there is a county assessor open book meeting on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the county assessor's office. This is for taxpayers to discuss their property assessment and values. Most, most years when we have folks come in at the end of the year and talk about our budget, what their actual concern is the value of their property and how that is assessed into the taxes, that their values have went up, their values have went up. This is where you have that conversation, is with the county assessor, and again, that's on May 15th, 2024, and that is what he, that conversation will determine that you feel that you have a fair value on your house, and then as we work out the process for our taxes and what we need to operate the city, it gets assessed based on that. So this is the first step if you think that your house is overpriced or it's not fair. So I would highly suggest if you've received that yellow form from the assessor's office and you think there's some information that needs to be discussed, please go and talk to the county assessor on May 15th, it's open, you don't need an appointment. Next, consider a request to co-sponsor the Koochin Labor Day Assembly Labor Day picnic on Monday, September 2nd. Mark, come on up.
It seems like I was here last week for this.
No, this was about a year ago.
Yeah. Again, this year, thank you for letting us come forward and ask for the use of Smokey Bear Park and to close Third Street from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. on that Monday. This is, I think, our 15th year, pretty close to it, and so far it's been very successful, and we appreciate the city's cooperation.
What specifically are you looking for this year, same as the past?
Yes.
So then, I have an interesting question, I don't know if you've heard, but we did have a fire in the ban shell. And with that being said, there's going to be some changes that we're going to be looking at in the very near future on what's going to happen there. I know you guys have used the ban shell in the past. There is some information that the city administrator and I have been working with, with our insurance company about being able to utilize a stage, is that something that you would need, or city administrator, is that something that has been discussed for this event?
No, that's why Mr. Thorpe is here today to find out what the exact request may or may not be and what we can accommodate.
Okay.
Okay.
So in the event that you, you wanted to use the ban shell, because I know you guys have had music played there in the past, we are looking at getting a, obviously, we're still working with insurance as everything goes through, but we may have a temporary stage for the 4th of July and for some other events that we have in the community that would utilize that. Would that be something that you would want to utilize as well?
I believe it would be, yes, yes.
Perfect. So with that being said, if we were to move forward with the same things that we've done in the past, along with use of a stage for the 4th, or for the Labor Day picnic, chair would entertain a motion to move forward.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kayler. Any discussion or questions for Mark? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Thank you so much, Mark. You moved that over, I thought you had something you had to say.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, we'll go to a mayoral proclamation of May 19th through the 25th, as National Travel and Tourism Week. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler.
A second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote yes, motion carries. Next, we have a proclamation proclaiming May as Mental Health Month. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, mayoral proclamation proclaiming no mow May in International Falls. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Wegner, I didn't expect it over that side. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, that's where I expected the first to come from.
Who would think of something like this?
Well, I heard it was you and the rest of the world. So, discussion on that.
If you'd like someone.
I would love for someone to give some discussion.
Well, I, you know, as you know, it's been kind of a movement the last two years, different communities, to let people, if they choose not to mow their lawns, so the natural grasses and other flowers that come and go that time of year, so the bees and other pollinators can come in and have some food to eat or what they do, and continue the cycle.
Well, no, please, keep.
No, I'm good, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Well, I would, I would say that when I first became mayor, I wanted to bring up no mow May, but I didn't have the, I couldn't do it. I couldn't bring it up with all the issues.
I think some places they call it hoot spa.
But the, but the thing of it is, is I've always been so concerned because we, we are fighting blight, we deal with that, a vast majority of the issues that we have end up coming down to lawn mowing, and so what I, my only concern, and I'm going to vote yes for this, I just want you to know, I am, I'm fully in support of it, but I do get concerned that, you know, there's going to be a conversation in the community that, well, you didn't, we didn't have to mow in, in May, now why do we have to mow in June, July, August, September?
See, the bees and other animals are done doing their thing in May.
We're not going to have a birds and bees conversation.
Well, I'm just telling you, that's why.
All right, so I'm in, in support of it, it's just, that is the concern I have, is with the, the position that the city council has on blight, but I'm, I'm more than willing to move forward. Any other discussion?
Well, you don't, you don't have those other months on here, so.
No, fair, fair enough.
I mean, it just says May.
Yeah. Yeah, but then, I don't know, maybe in May brings up, have you ever heard about no mow June?
Nope.
I didn't want to throw in natural species plants all on the same park, so we'll save that for another day.
I didn't know you were such a horticulturist.
I, I'm not, I, you know, more environmentally friendly than you'd suspect.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, we'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. I never thought that that would ever happen while I was mayor, I'm actually kind of excited about that.
I might have some inspiration in the audience.
All right, we'll go to approve a certificate of support for a new replacement hospital for Rainy Lake Medical Center's USDA Rural Development Community Facilities Application. I don't believe that Rob is here, do we have a representative of? All right. Betty, do you have any, just quick background information on this?
Yep, I can just add a bit, I know the head last week had representatives up from the USDA, and they had toured the current location and the new location of the proposed facility, updated facility, so with that and with their application, they are asking for this certificate of support, and so that is why this is here before you. I know we have, you know, talked with Rob at length in regards to our engineers and public works are working with them on, you know, looking at what needs to be moved as far as city utilities and different things on the property for this, it's all part of the process as we work through it, but this is just one more piece to help them secure funding, you know, for their project.
Excellent. So the chair would entertain a motion to approve that, that application.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have approval of hiring employees for Public Works Department as presented. I believe we have 10 names on, on the list. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those hires.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have a resolution authorizing an execution of the Minnesota Department of Transportation Airport Improvement Grant excluding, oh, I did, I'm sorry.
All excited about not having to mow in May, aren't you?
Yeah, I can't get over it. Just think of all the gas I'll save. Approve hiring a casual paramedic for the ambulance services, service. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler.
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Now, we'll go to the, the resolution for the Department of Transportation Airport Improvement Grant excluding land acquisition. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler.
Second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, we have some Public Works Committee recommendations. Approve the Koochin County Cooperative Weed Management Area Memorandum of Understanding. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, approve the A.W. Kudel and Sons Proposal for Equipment Storage Building, Plumbing Modifications, and Trench Drains. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that. We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next is the first of the two additions that we had to the agenda, this is the cooperative agreement with Koochin County and the City of International Falls for design and construction of the Fifth Street Storm Sewer Relocation to accommodate the Koochin Jail Expansion Project. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries, five zero. Next, approve Koochin Technology Initiative, use of Cary Park Arena parking lot on the morning of June 8th, 2024, for a public electronic waste collection, e-waste collection event. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. I see we have audience members, did you want to come up and talk about the project? Because I'm actually really, really interested in it. Not that we weren't really interested in everything else on the agenda, but when we have people come in, it's fantastic to be able to talk to them.
And, and a little bit of a last minute addition to your agenda, so I appreciate Betty's help with that.
Yeah, no problem.
So this is really, we're in the planning phases right now, but in order to plan an act, an event like this, we needed to know we had a location. Our starting point was the parking lot in the courthouse, but that will probably be ripped up by that time for the jail bill project. Yeah, our goal is to try and get the electronic waste out of people's homes and properly taken care of, moved out of the county. Tim's done a great job as our American Connection Corps member, making a strong connection with PCs for people, and they have agreed to come up and take the devices that we collect out of the community, and they will be recycled and refurbished as appropriate, and they have been very generous in what they are taking. So the goal is to try and make sure that electronic waste no longer goes out to the transfer station, but out of the county completely, and gets recycled.
So no more May, e-waste June.
Yeah, there you go.
And, and we're getting rid of evasive species, plant wise. Well, we okayed it, right?
I know, I know, I was there. So does this e-waste stay in Minnesota to be recycled and reused, or how does that?
Yeah, PCs for People is based out of St. Paul.
Okay.
Originated down in Mankato, but they moved their, their company base in St. Paul, but they, they are nationwide now, they are a nationwide organization, they have 11 or 12 sites throughout the country, and this, they go down there, they bring it down, Tim has toured the facility, it's huge, he describes it as being like Menards, only chaotic, so huge, and they, they sort the devices, things that can be refurbished, get refurbished, things that need to be recycled, they will strip apart and, and make sure that the precious metals and dangerous materials are handled properly.
Excellent. Please.
What are, what are the, any devices, phones, computers, what are we looking at here?
Yes.
Yes.
You're telling us anything that plugs in, although we're working to clarify that.
Yeah.
But really, they've been very open to taking.
Not appliance.
Smart TVs?
Smart TVs, they've even taken CRTs right now, although they, they're supposed to be charging a fee, but they haven't charged us for what we've gotten rid of so far, but so now we're, we're looking to do this as a new project to, I don't know about you, I have two old laptops in my house, and I just, like, I, I don't want to throw them in the garbage, I don't, they don't belong in there, right?
Would this include batteries and, like, old TV monitors, which, those would be things you'd have to pay for to send to the transfer site?
That's the hope, and we're still in talks with PCs for People, but so far, they have taken all of that stuff from us right now. The goal is to save the county money, right, because right now, they spend $18,000 to $20,000 a year to haul what does get brought to them out of, out of the county, and we're trying to make it a, a good thing for the county as a whole, get rid of the waste and make it turn into something more productive.
Of course, the fear is also that people will try and avoid bringing it to the transfer station and dump it in a ditch or the river or something like that.
Yep, no, absolutely, I think it's a fantastic project.
Yeah.
Very exciting. Any other questions?
Not a question, I just comment about this, the KTI organization has branched out more, it's not just, you know, when it first started, it was all broadband and, you know, getting that, but other things is doing now, and I personally know, Tim came to the Koochin County Vets Lodge a couple Wednesdays ago, and with some students from the high school to help out some veterans and some maybe were not veterans get acquainted a little more with their computers, some got some free refurbished ones and got to hang out with the kids, and the kids got to hang out with them, which I actually think is the best part of the whole thing, so thank you for all that.
And it wasn't just the seniors and vets that were learning, the kids turned around.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Will you be advertising this?
Yes.
Somewhere?
Once we have everything from, we've got some pending grant applications, try and give us some support financially to, to carry out the event, so once we know where our support's coming from, then we'll start advertising in earnest.
Okay. Perfect. All right, please.
And if you want to share those advertisements with us, we can put it on our social media as well to help with that.
Absolutely.
And also, yes, we've been working with Assistant Director of Public Works, Mike Wallace, too, and coordinating with him on using the facility, so, and at that time, there was nothing else planned there, so the date worked out with them as well.
Perfect. All right, well, we have a motion and a second, if there's no other discussion, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Normal, yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate his support.
Thank you. Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to the reports of the administrator, attorney, and department heads, city administrator.
Mayor, I have nothing additional this evening, thank you.
Can you just give a quick rundown for just the community on the ban shell and how we're moving forward with, the insurance adjusters came in, we had a fire, we're, we're moving forward, just because we, this is the first meeting we've had since, since the event, and just an update of where we're at.
Yep, I reached out immediately with the assistant, or excuse me, with the assistance of the Director of Public Works with understanding what was in the facility, to our insurance agent, they were up here, I believe, the following afternoon, Tuesday afternoon, and they went through, the fire marshal was also here, the fire marshal has created a report, the police department has also done a report on the incident, they will all be coordinating those reports back to our insurance adjuster, they are working with the higher ups as the value of, you know, the facility is significant. We were, the agent has told us we're well covered, we have, the facility is covered under our insurance, it's, and we are insured well for the property, and that as soon as he speaks with his higher ups and determines what we can do moving forward, the status of it after all the pictures and in his investigation, they will contact us and tell us what next steps are, and don't know what exactly what that's going to be, so as soon as I hear from them, we would be reaching back out to you and setting down as a group and making a decision from what they're telling us we need to do and how to move forward.
Excellent. Any questions for the city administrator regarding that, please?
Will you be pressing them?
Pressing them?
Yeah.
Absolutely, I know the Director of Public Works already asked me today, have you heard, have you heard? No, but I can definitely give our adjuster a call in the morning and just say, where are we at, you know, because we need to get it cleaned up sooner than later, what that looks like and how we do that, you know, we need to have them obviously tell us, but yes, I can definitely reach out first thing in the morning and see where we're at.
Yeah.
He did indicate it might be early this week.
Summer's coming, right, maybe?
Yes, you're correct, yes.
We're going to need the park, right?
Yes, absolutely, and they understand that, and that's why mayor indicated, too, if we need to, we have coverage for, to bring in a platform, you know, a stage, they understand that we have things reserved there, so they'll work with us on those reservations and getting what we need to satisfy those reservations and things as well. And they know we have the ban secured already for our 4th of July event, so we just need to, we'll be coordinating with them to have that, those items covered as well through our insurance policy.
Ted, did you have something to add? You almost made it through a meeting without coming up.
There's no, no way.
I know.
I apologize for that. Thank you, Mayor, Council, I just wanted to add that once we do find out from the insurance company what direction, okay, we need to file a permit with the MPCA, we need to solicit quotes, so the idea of, you know, there's still going to be a bit of a process. Last Friday, we had a firm here, last Thursday, I believe, we had a firm here that tested for lead paint and asbestos, which was going to be required. So once we find out, you know, we've got a lot of things in place right now, but, you know, if we find out tomorrow that, you know, we've got to take the whole thing down, it's, it'll still be a little while, but I think we're sitting in a real good spot to get it taken care of sooner rather than later, so.
Well, and I had sent you a text late last week, it had came to my attention, I think we all knew that it was the Pete Peterson ban shell, and I had, one of the family members had reached out to me about the plaque and whatever happens, that they would like to have the, any new facility rededicated and/or they'd like to receive the old plaque back, so I reached out to you and made sure that that plaque has been safe, and, and you have told me that it is at Public Works and it's being taken care of until we figure out what we're doing moving forward.
Yes, and, and the outpouring of, asking about that plaque, I wanted to make sure that it was taken care of and put away. One of the things is that I find interesting, so we've got like push mowers and whatnot in there, right, we're not allowed to take them out right now, but we have to take them out to see if we can get them going again before they, right, so there's, it's, it's going to take a little while, but.
You don't need them till June.
Tom, to me, it's all coming together.
It's all coming together, right?
It's no more May.
But yes.
You didn't think I was thinking of you, did you? Well, I was, but.
I don't know if I really agree with you, but yeah.
That might have been my inspiration.
Yeah, and, and the only other thing that I'd like to add on, on the ban shell is there was a huge outpouring of support from our community, and it's, it's been in our community for over 80 years, so I think we all have memories of one, one way or another of that ban shell, whether it was watching a preschool graduation or the Labor Day picnic, I mean, we've had a lot of events there, 4th of July, we, in the time that I've been mayor, we decided that we wanted to utilize that building a lot more, and so we moved the concerts on the 3rd of July over to the ban shell to be able to have more exposure for that building, so it, we've all had a lot of memories there. have more exposure for that building. So it, we've all had a lot of memories there. And the outcry, I think, I don't know if the, the fire had went out before there was Facebook dedications to, let's save the ban shell, let's, we, we need to raise money. And the, the reality is, is we have great staff here at the city, and we're fortunate enough that it is well insured. We will be able to do something. I mean, it'll come down to this council, but we'll, I, I don't see any way we don't try to rebuild that structure in some capacity. And that's what I've, I've heard as well. I don't think that this is hiding any, or sharing too much information. The insurance company said if we build it, it needs to be a ban shell with a stage, two bathrooms, and a storage unit. So it may not be exactly what we have right now, but it'll be something that'll be great for our community for the next eighty years. So sometimes we, we get so emotional that we start raising funds, and we, we need to find out what we have before we can really deal with that. So.
And, and I just want to add, as, you know, I, I know some of the consellers had asked questions about, you know, some of our facility study that we did. The key thing to that building is the, it may not look the same due to the fact that the ADA compliance side of it, okay? The bathrooms and the stage don't meet compliance. That's probably the biggest thing right now, is whatever we put back there has to, has to meet current code, okay? It's, it's not that everything was, you know, not that it was a danger, but, you know, believe it or not, it's going to be a major upgrade. That's when the ADA kicks in, that's where we have to follow it, and, and that's where the look could be different, because that's, that's something we have to do, so everybody can enjoy it.
Oh, and after the meeting, if anyone wants to look, Councilor Wagner has a, has a rendering that he'd like to see as the, the new ban shell. So it's really exciting, big things. All right. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Go to the city attorney. City Attorney, you have anything to add?
I have nothing.
All right. Department heads. Ted, you've already had your spot in the sun. Anybody else? No? Go to the police, police monthly report was in your packet. Fire EMS monthly report was also in your packet. We'll go to reports of mayor councils, council committees, boards, and commissions. Anybody have anything to bring forward? All right.
Well, we had a Public Safety Committee meeting today and discussed the Civil Service Commission at length. I think we made some real good progress there. Councilor Kayler, Councilor Holden, Councilor Holden and I are on the board. Kayler was there, and representatives from the fire and police.
Excellent. All right, and I, I don't have anything to add. We do have a committee of the whole that was moved because last week we were all, well, some of us were out of town. We weren't going to have a forum. So that'll be in two weeks, I believe, two weeks from tonight?
Yeah.
All right. Last thing that I want to mention, though, we do have a Fourth of July committee meeting coming up. And with that being said, we are looking for new committee members. Anyone that wants to be part of the Fourth of July celebration, we have everything from folks helping the night of, with the concert, parade, vendors in the park. I mean, we have a ton of different activities that go along with the Fourth of July, and we're, we're really kind of molding what it looks like moving forward. So very excited. We do have a big band this year. If you guys have ever heard of Aerosmith, we're not getting them. But we are going to have a, a group which is called Gen X Jute Box. They are from southern Minnesota. They are kind of like the regional hairball of the nineteen nineties and two thousands, whereas Hairball did the eighties, or the seventies and eighties. So these guys do costume changes. It should be a really, really exciting show this year. So very excited for that. But anyone that wants to be part of the Fourth of July Commission, please contact the city offices, and we will get you information to be part of that. It's, it's been a hoot. I've been on it for almost eight years now, so it's, it is a lot of fun.
So you're, you're telling me that this band is, it's lucky I play younger than my age, huh? I'll be able to enjoy it.
I saw you jamming last year.
No. Not quite, but yes.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Early wasn't joined.
All right. So anyone in the audience have anything to bring forward? All right, we'll go to correspondence. We have the Kooching County Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes from March twenty-sixth, and our next meeting is, our next council meeting is going to be May sixth, 2024. This meeting is adjourned.